Let's please take our seats. Welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have our invocation from Dr. Lawanda Filomi of Greater Bethlehem Church in Atlanta, Georgia, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Happy New Years, good evening, commissioners. Let us pray. Father God, we come. We come seeking your wisdom, your knowledge, and your understanding. We lift our head to the hills which comes our help, realizing that all our help come for you. We realize that this is the day that you have made, and truly, we shall rejoice in it. You've been mighty good to us down through the hills, through hard times, six times. We just want to take a moment just to say thank you. We have friends and family that may be dealing with bereavement. We ask you to go by and allow your tender arms around them. We ask you to give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the patience to run your race, and we will be so careful to give you all the praise, all the glory, in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, individual and just for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our January 16th regular business meeting of 2024. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
Yes, madam clerk, I would like to remove Resolution 2024-21, Resolution authorizing to enter into an employment agreement for CFO Stacy Merritt. I'd like to remove that from this agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
Why are we removing this again?
There's some additional questions that additional, one or two of the commissioners has in reference to just making sure that the background and the qualifications are what they can either vote up or vote down.
I would like to state on record that we...
Hold on a second. Go ahead.
Right, and if we're going to do that, we open it up.
Okay, Commissioner Franklin.
We open up a position for others to apply.
Okay, Commissioner Franklin.
I don't have a problem with opening it up at all. I think that we should open it up, but I think it's very important for this board to be mindful of treating one everyone in an equitable fashion. In fact, we had a previous CFO that did not have the qualifications that the current person that's applying for the role does. Also, it brings me a great concern that we're asking those in a position to review matters when in actuality, we don't hold those responsible as well. Again, this board needs to be very careful of how we move and make sure that we move in an equitable fashion, and that's all I yield to you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right, four to one, it passes. Are there any others?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
I'd like to take item number 16 separately, 2024-19.
Madam Clerk, you clear?
I'm clear, Mr. Chair.
Additionally, Mr. Chair, I'd like to take item 11 separately as well. Additionally, item nine separately as well. Nine is 2024-12. And then finally, item four. I'd like to, I'm going to make my first motion to remove it because of the possibility of the fact that this board did not follow the guidelines of which we should be following for any awardance of service. There's a such thing called a monsionopoly, and this what we create just that. It's not the issue with providing the service, but I have had those haulers come to me personally and state that they have been placed in a disadvantageous space, and it is very unfortunate that I do understand that concern. So my first motion is to remove it altogether.
This is item four, right?
This is item four, which is 23-20.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Any questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three to, it passes. It'll be removed. Any others? All right, here are no others. I will ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Chairman.
Yes.
Can you go through just the last two, Commissioner Franklin?
Madam Clerk, repeat the items that are going onto the regular agenda as proposed by Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have item number four removed from agenda. Item number nine, Resolution 2024-12, separate on regular agenda. Item number 11, 2024-14, separate on regular agenda. Item number 16, 2024-19, separate on regular agenda. And item number 18, 2024-21, has been removed.
I didn't get those last two.
The last two.
Sixteen and eighteen.
Sixteen.
Yes. Thank you. Any others?
No, the only other thing I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, I brought it to the board's attention only because it's now public knowledge. It has been noticed, noted in the court system that the CFO position was actually created without following the rules and guidelines of the state. And so therefore, if we are going to move forward, my suggestion on record is that we review what is a legal position, which is the finance director position. The state does require, even though we have a home rule, that it requires a certain number of days that a position is advertised, a specific number of days that it must be out there, and additionally, for those to respond to it. So I'm glad that the board realized that. However, however, the CFO position, again, within the court system, has been filed as being that this previous board did not follow the guidelines in order to create it legally.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other questions? Any other items? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
Is there a motion, motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second to motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number nine, Resolution 2024-12, presented by our Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. Board, Resolution 2024-12 is a resolution providing for the establishment, publication of qualifying fees for each county office to be fulfilled in the upcoming primary and general election, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions?
I just want per record for it to be read what they are. A lot of times we give a synopsis, and this is something that definitely affects the public and those who may dare to want to serve. So we want to make sure we know exactly what those fees are. So if you would, please read them into record.
All right, for probate judge, let me make sure I have the correct. So for probate judge, that amount is $3,281.11. Clerk of Superior Court, $3,281.11. Sheriff, $3,390.17. Tax Commissioner, $3,281.11. Chief Magistrate Court Judge, $3,345.71. Solicitor General, $5,030.27. State Court Judge, that is currently held by Judge Sonia George, $4,960.60. State Court Judge, a position is currently held by Judge Shalonda Jones Parker, $5,239.29. County Commissioner Chair, $5,880.1. Commissioner District Two, $1,675.06. Commissioner District Three, $1,597.15. Board of Education Chair, $792. Board of Education Vice Chair, $756. Board of Education Districts One, Two, Four, Five, Six, Seven, and Eight, $720. And then surveyor, $35.
Can you go back to the Board of Education and read the first one again?
Board of Education Chair, $792.
Okay, go to the next one, I'm sorry.
Board of Education Vice Chair, $756.
I had a question. The chair has voted on by the board after election. Why is there a difference?
Based on the calculation that the school board provided, that was what the three percent of that income that the elected official earned from their previous year.
I think we need to, we can approve it, but we need to look at that because it wouldn't make sense in time, not so much the amount per se, but the procedure is that we don't vote a school board chair. We vote for a board member and the board votes for the chair. So that would be after the election.
It would be the position that's currently held by the chair.
We could talk about it offline, but I would like to have that excluded because it doesn't go along with process. Thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
I'm going to say nay, only because the accuracy. I believe that there's a little bit that we need to correct, but other than that, I think that the procedures gives me an opportunity to approve it within 24 hours once I get that information. Thank you.
All right, four to one, it passes. Next.
Our next item is item number 11, Resolution 2024-14.
Resolution 2024-14 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County through the Office of Grants Administration to reallocate community development block grant, CDBG funds, from Clayton County Library Services, Africa's Children's Fund, and Clayton County Community Service Authority to Hearts to Nourish Hope for Facility Improvements, to authorize the chairman on or his designated to execute any related documents and otherwise perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate, excuse me, appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, and the total amount is $176,148.49.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
Understanding that the community block grant fund is supposed to enhance the community, not quite understanding why would there be a recommendation without there being information provided to this board ahead of time for it to come from the library system, which is directly within our budget, and then also the Clayton County Community Services Authority, which we know they definitely need all the help that they could get because those funds go directly to the citizens. So I'm not understanding what is, why is this necessary at this point in time?
Ms. Boswell.
Yes.
Hey, Ms. Boswell.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good evening. The library was awarded $125,000 for facility improvements at Battle Creek. They expended $121,000, which left a balance for that project of $46,2537. So the project was complete. Also, for the 2019 project, they were awarded $165,000, of which they spent $155. That was for lighting, updating the flooring, the carpet. So the balance, the project was complete, and the small balance left was $4,900 CSA. They were awarded $50,000. They expended $35,200, which left a balance of $1,480, and the project was complete, and they requested that the funds be reallocated.
Okay, thank you for that question. Does the county own the Hearts to Nourish Hope building? Or is that privately owned?
Privately.
So we're going to move CDBG funding to a building that's not owned by the county?
It's not owned by the county, but services are provided.
I'm clear, yes, ma'am. The other thing I do want to say on record, and thank you for the job that you're doing, I actually have been following this Battle Creek project, and it's similar to actually the Leaking building that's in District Two. There's a lot more work that needs to be done in there. I had concerns about what was done and how it was done, and it was brought to my attention by citizens. So I just want to state that on record, and I appreciate you for bringing this to our attention, and thank you for the work you do and always being accessible.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Commissioner. How does this come about to begin with? That would be my major question. How did this come about to where we're now going to authorize that these funds go to Hearts to Nourish?
Well, it came about because, as you know, according to HUD regulations, we have to expend the funds by a certain deadline. That deadline is fastly approaching, which is May. So any funds that have not been expended, instead of those funds going back to HUD, we choose to use those funds in the community. So these funds are being reallocated in the community to serve the citizens of Clayton County.
You answered both my questions. My next question too.
I'm glad you stated that, and I just, I'm sorry, I'll wait, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, I'm done.
I'm thank you, this is Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Davis, for that, because it raised another question. Did we open this up to others within the community that may have received it? Because we're talking about making sure we open up positions for all to have an opportunity. Did we open this up?
Well, the process that we have is, we have an application process that's opened up annually.
Right.
Okay? That application process is closed. So this is not to open up to re-award, but to reallocate to existing projects that fit within the guidelines.
I'm clear, but last time I checked that list through CDBG funding is an extensive list. And so for me, it concerns me that we all of a sudden are going to give it to Hearts when there are other groups, again, that have approached me, have called me, have emailed me, and said they want to have the opportunity, a fair opportunity. So that's my only concern. Again, the work you're doing is amazing, but last we checked, I know it's well over 120 nonprofits that had applied. And so I think that the way we're doing, going about it is a concern. And then secondly, as I already stated earlier, about it not being a county-owned building.
Any other questions, comments?
No, but thank you, Ms. Boswell.
Yes, one other statement. I think going forward, though, we need to have some kind of written procedure of how we begin to use or allocate unused funds.
We do.
We do? And what is, what is that at a very high level?
High level, meaning that we have to have policy and procedures in place for when HUD comes out and monitor.
But I mean, as far as just choosing this one organization to put that?
No, it wasn't arbitrarily done. The agency has been speaking to us about, first of all, whenever we reallocate funds to an agency, they have requested those funds, the reallocated funds.
But we offer that up to everyone that had already done that?
Everyone had the opportunity to request.
So a notice was sent out legally? That's what I'm asking, I'm sorry. No legal notice was sent out?
No.
Okay, thank you so very much.
But we did publish in the newspaper about the funds.
But that would be legal. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Boswell.
All right, those in favor, aye. Opposed?
Nay, for the reasons already stated on record.
All right, four to one, it passes. Mr. Reed.
Our next item is item number 16.
Item 16 is Resolution 2024-19, which is a resolution by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners requesting the introduction of local legislation creating a public facilities authority to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Hambrik. Are there any questions?
Yes, obviously, there've been some conversations going on because I'm not understanding the need for this, but I'm ready to vote.
Any other questions, comments? Those in favor, aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Four to one, it passes.
Not enough information to vote.
Our next...
Go ahead, madam clerk, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, our next items are board appointments, beginning with item number 19.
Did we cover number four?
Number four?
Yeah.
Yes.
We did, written?
Yeah, that was pulled all together.
Number four?
Yep.
Okay.
First board appointment is to the Board of Health. Dr. Lavinia Jackson's term on the Board of Health expired on December 31st, 2023. New term is for six years, expired on December 31st, 2029. This is a City of Forest Park recommendation, and I have been notified that they want to reappoint Dr. Lavinia Jackson. Is there a second? I'll put that in form of motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Normally on our boards, we appoint people that live in Clayton County, and I think this may have been done when Ms. Jackson was working for the school system. I'm not sure.
We have a representative on Board Health from the school system. There's a community disposition here through the City of Forest Parks for a community advocate.
So we, they do not have to have Clayton County residents?
I do not believe so. Madam Clerk, can you expand on that?
I believe they do have to, I can check on the specifications of this specific, you know, this Board of Health and get back with you, Commissioner Hambrik.
Okay, with that in mind, I will, yes, I will amend my motion, and we'll hold it until next, next meeting for you to get clarity on it.
And, Mr. Chair, I will double-check the address.
Okay, thank you. All right, next board appointment is to the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council. Joe Grubbs resigned from the Department of Behavioral Health. Region Three Advisory Council exists in terms for three years, beginning immediately, and expires February 28th, 2024. Vice Chair Davis.
Yes, I'd like to move that we appoint Dr. Keith Horton.
All right, I'll second that motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Next board appointment is also to the Department of Behavioral, Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Council. Monique McDowell's term on the Board of Health, Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council expires January 3rd, 1st, 2024. New term is for three years, expired January 3rd, 1st, 2027. Dr. Anderson.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Ms. Monique McDowell.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item is our zoning hearing. Citizens may speak for or against an item that's considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have 10 minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within a 10-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to cease speaking and leave the podium. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor shall speak first. Applicants in cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Please remember abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Our first and only zoning case is item number 22, BLC 2308-0349, which is a conditional use permit for a place of worship at 2018, 2024, 2100A, 2100B, and 2100C, Walt Stevens Road in Jonesboro, Georgia, 30236.
Good evening. This is requested by Hector Walker Jordan, PC, for a, for a place of worship, which is in the UV Urban Village Zoning District. Said property consisting of 71.18 acres is further known as Parcels 12013A, A002, 12014B, A001A, 120113A, A001, 12014B, A002, 12014B, A003, 12014B, A001, and located on the north side of Walt Stevens Road between Spivey Village Way and Ravelry Drive. This is the visual injuries map. This is the zoning map and the area, along with the survey of the northern part of the property and the southern part of the property. Staff and Zack recommendation is approval with conditions. The first is 10-foot sidewalks, so I'll be installed on Walt Stevens Road. Second is five-foot sidewalks, so I'll be installed for the residential areas north of the car path, multi-use path, and eight-foot sidewalks for non-residential areas south of the car, of the car path, multi-use path. The third is five-foot sidewalks, so I'll be installed on the outer loop on the opposite side of the driveways for the residential areas. Fourth is 20-foot undisturbed buffers, so I'll be installed along the property line. Fifth is tree lighting, so I'll be installed internally within the project. And the final, and sixth is a coming soon type rendering for the site, so I'll be installed along, so I'll be installed on site along Walt Stevens Road. And the applicant does have a presentation.
All right, applicant.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Jordan with Hector Walker Jordan, PC, 205 Corporate Center Drive, Suite B, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281.
Would you like to reserve any minutes for rebuttal?
I'll reserve four minutes, please.
Four minutes.
And I do have some handouts here, just so you have, it might be a little hard to see that. Please proceed. Mr. Chair, this item is the last of seven conditional use permits that we've requested as the applicant for this item on behalf of the owner for the Harvest Village mixed-use development off Walt Stevens Road. You may recall that last month in December, we were here before the board to present for the other six conditional use permits, which the board unanimously approved and which we are very grateful for. Just as a brief reminder, and I'll be, I'll be as brief as possible because I know we went over this a good bit at the last hearing, and I'm of course glad to answer any questions, but Harvest Village is a legacy project for Cindy and Bubba Cathy. The time and resources that they would be putting into, devoting to this project, it would be well beyond any other commercial developer for a project like this, including them putting in tens of millions of dollars for this nice project to help beautify the area and to really make it a true, sustainable, village-oriented, legacy community. This is something that they want to, to leave behind and to continue to go on and be a treasure for the county well after their time on earth here. Again, the parcels, just to reorient you to the area, the parcels are approximately 71 acres fronting Walt Stevens Road, near the intersection with Camp Avenue, where the old Walker's Nursery used to be, if you may recall. The development would be comprised of a commercial portion that's closer, fronting Walt Stevens Road, as well as a smaller residential area divided up into three pods in the back. As far as commercial uses, those uses would include farm-to-table restaurant, a deli, a small local coffee shop, retail shops with potentially a bookstore, men's and women's clothing boutique, art supply store, photography framing shop, a general community, a community general store, apothecary, and business center. The residential uses, again, are in the back and would be a total of 50 craftsman-style single-family cottages, each pod having its own building, separate building for the residents of that pod for communal dining, and a, an apartment on top that they can reserve for guests as needed at no charge. There's also community uses. This is a village community atmosphere, and these community uses would be a community business center, art studio and teaching area, community recital hall, outdoor gathering area, and stargazing patio, a community gardening area, and then finally, what we're here tonight for is the community chapel. We're requesting this final conditional use permit to include in this village community a small 1,800-square-foot chapel. It would not seat more than 50 people, and although it's insignificant in size, it is very important to the Catholics to be able to provide this spiritual statement structure as part of this project. It's also important to... It's also important to emphasize that this is not going to be an actual church. Um, one is not big enough to be an actual church. This is going to be more of a place, a quiet refuge that, uh, residents in the community that are onsite can stop by for some individual reflection, meditation, and personal prayer. Um, uh, there will be no congregation and no organized services will, will be planned like a church. Um, Mr. Chairman, board members, I've presented a, or provided a printout, uh, that shows the elevations for the, the church, and I believe for the rest of everybody here, if I can, these are elevations and renderings for this structure. You can see it's very modest in size, but does go hand in hand with the Catholic's vision for this, this project. Um, the, uh, staff is recommended approval, um, uh, subject to conditions that, uh, are the same as the conditions that were placed on the other CUPs, and we're completely on board with. Uh, Zag is also, uh, recommended approval, and we greatly appreciate this board's, uh, approval of this and certainly its, its support for the other CUPs.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We have about a minute left. If anyone would like to speak in favor of applicant's request, anyone like to speak in favor of? Anyone in opposition to? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the request? All right, sir. Do you want to use your four minutes or are you ready to proceed?
No, I, I, I can forfeit those, but I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes.
Come here.
Yes. Uh, looking on the, um, information you provided for it, it shows the structure of two different churches. So which one?
So the, the, the actual photos themselves are just examples, um, uh, of, of the type of church. The more engineered, um, elevations that are, yeah, black and white and green, and those are, are, are closer to what we're looking at. Um, Roger Moss is here tonight, that would, and he might be able to provide a little bit more detail on that, but, uh, right now it's at the conceptual phase, but it is, it is, the footprint is, would be that, right there.
I like this.
The top right. The top right, yeah. Any other questions? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I move that we approve B O C two-three zero eight dash zero three four nine with conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. I oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes maximum time limit to speak before the board with a total time of twenty minutes for public comments. Please remember, comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please remember to state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Atanya Jean Funny.
Good evening. Atanya Jean Funny, Clayton County, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Community. I think tonight is, um, a good reason of why public comment should be at the front because the questions I have is about something that's actually on the agenda. Um, luckily, it was, uh, removed for tonight, but, um, I guess we'll just have to wait till there's a new board to, uh, get that changed at this point. So my questions are about the mandatory trash pickup. So, um, we still have questions about how the billing is going to be enforced. Um, if the residents receive a citation, how, how is that enforced? Are we gonna eventually start putting liens on people's homes for not paying the trash? Like, we still don't know because it's not going to be on the tax bill, so we still have issues about how really we're going to enforce billing. The other questions I have about the mandatory trash pickup, are we locked into more than one year? So I know the bidders came in, they gave a rate. Is this rate just for one year? Can they, did we put a percentage on how much they can go up the next year? Because if they came in with a low rate for one year just to get the bid, the next year they can come back and there's no telling what the rate will be. So we still have questions on how it's going to be increased. Also, it's one can, so there are a lot of families that may need more than one can. So I know right now we have it where the families can order another can from the vendor, but do we put anything in there if there's extra bags? Are they gonna pick up extra bags? And, um, also, is there times throughout the year where they're going to pick up bulk? Um, are any of these things, because we haven't seen the contract, I don't know if you all have actually done the contract with them, but they put in bids, so was any of these things on the, um, terms when they did the bid?
Okay, your time is up, and yes, a lot of those questions that you asked have been addressed through the RFP process. I want you to get with Mr. Stanford. He can provide you some additional information, uh, and it might be an ongoing process, so he's the best update that he, he can provide you with the best update.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Angelina Cortez.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe, uh, it can come back and others that may have the same questions will hear or can hear.
Well, we're, we will have another presentation through the work session that, uh, a lot of those questions will be answered as well. So, yes, there will be a follow-up. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and everyone else here. Uh, my name is Angelina Cortez, and this is a notice and request for the resignation of Clayton County Superior Court Judge Geronda Carter for bad faith towards a plaintiff in case number two zero two-three, C V zero zero two seven nine. This notices for the board to investigate this case and the recent, uh, fifteenth of November recusal of said Superior Court Judge. I seek to file a suit against Clayton County based on bad faith of said, uh, public trustee in ten days.
Well, thank you for that, and just know that that's a judicial investigation or review that is beyond the scope of this board's authority. So, uh, you would have to address that through the, and Mr. Reed probably can tell you better than I can. Is it the, uh, Judges Association Bar or what?
Yes, you would need to look. Uh, I would recommend you reach out to the state bar and ask them who you would need to, what would be their appropriate, um, entity to investigate what you're looking for.
So does Clayton County not have any level of liability for not training their judges appropriately?
She's an elected official like we are, ma'am, and we don't have any authority over her, nor does she have any authority over us as well as elected officials.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Drew Andrews.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, members. Uh, first, I'd like to express my disappointment that the, uh, public comment is still relegated towards the end, and then not all the members here to hear from the people. That's offensive. Uh, but I do want to thank you for opening up eight warming center, but what took you so long? I'm sitting at home looking at the weather report, wondering if you guys see the same thing I'm seeing. So, thank you, but I would like for us to be a little more prepared, like six months out. That way, when we launch, we have logistics in place where we know, uh, uh, pickup centers because many of those who are unhoused don't have vehicles. So it's, you know, they need help getting there, so we have agencies that can provide transportation if we coordinate with them. We have agencies that provide intake, so when they actually come to these warming center, there's, uh, uh, social worker there to engage and, uh, and help get them back on the right path. So thank you for what you're doing. Uh, lastly, because I'm fifty-five seconds already. Okay, thank you, because, but they're gonna be out back in the streets tomorrow at noon. Again, are you guys looking at the same weather report that I'm looking at? Because it's cold. So maybe we can expand it a little bit. Thank you. I see my time's up, and, uh, uh, if I, if you have any questions of me, I entertain them. If not, I take my seat.
No, we just appreciate your, your passion for what?
Thirty-six. What the heck is this public facility? What, what is it? Uh, if you can give us a little more detail.
We will talk offline. There was a whole presentation about that during one of our work sessions, but I would be only too happy to expound, uh, further with you on it. Thank you.
But thank you.
David Hamrick.
Ladies and gentlemen, Madam Clerk, Commissioners. Ahead of the nineteen ninety-six Atlanta Olympics, city officials decided to demolish Techwood Homes. The first housing project built was the first to go. Techwood had become a symbol of urban blight, crime, and poverty. By twenty-eleven, the rest of Atlanta's public housing had been razed. Unfortunately, Clayton County went in the opposite direction. As those residents were evicted from Atlanta, they were resettled in Clayton. Over the following years, more apartments filled the county. Those receiving government assistance grew along with the trash and the crime. As this seemingly unregulated expansion increased, no guidelines on conditions were established. In June twenty-twenty-two, the Atlanta Journal-Constitution released a report titled Dangerous Dwellings. The report highlighted residents living amidst mold, sewage backups, gunfire, and apartment fires. These complexes accounted for at least two hundred eighty-one homicides and twenty thousand serious crimes in Clayton, Cobb, DeKalb, Fulton, and Gwinnett over five years. These residents, who through bad decisions in life or having gone through events or circumstances beyond their control, are the ones most vulnerable in today's housing market. They do not have the wherewithal, the resources. Should they encounter bad conditions, they are literally trapped where they're at. As I speak of numbers and statistics and facts and figures, we seem to forget that there are faces, people, human beings, that represent these numbers. A simple quality of life ordinance is needed. What should be common sense guidelines is why this is needed. This ordinance lists the responsibilities of the landlord, the tenant. It also describes the role of code enforcement. They will be a neutral party. Their job is to record, document the complaint and/or conditions, whether by landlord or tenant, and to issue a factual report. Landlords are required to maintain.
I'm sorry, sir, but your time is up, and if you would, just, uh, state your name for me.
Oh, David Hamrick, Riverdale, District Three.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Timothy Von Dale Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I, I think that, uh, uh, my concern, Timothy Von Dale Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County.
Thank you.
I, 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 I think that the citizens, now, I have a serious concern because the mandatory trash pickup is the embryonic phase of beautification. We got rid of the beautification program for whatever reason, did not give it a chance to operate. So now, if you all can explain to me on the Q and A, I don't know if Mr. COO, uh, Mr. Carol Rogers can explain it. Item number four was taken off the agenda. Uh, Commissioner Davis, you second it. I don't know if you want to expound on, upon the reason why you second it, but we have, we have spent a lot of energy, two years on this program, and that, I'm gonna reiterate. This is the embryonic phase of beautification. We have to start somewhere, and it's a benefit for the citizens because it's cheaper than what they're paying now. So this board, to allow one commissioner to keep disrupting this process is kind of befuddling and confusing. I know she's doing it intentionally, out of arrogance because she can't. I want to know who that vendor is that said it was unfair practices because this was vetted through central services over two years. They made a sound decision. Everybody complied to the requirements. So why are we here? Can somebody please give me an explanation as to why? Mr. COO?
I address this board, sir, this board only, and the one, main one in reference to, uh, the comments. You would have to address that to the commissioner who made them.
But unfortunately, I'm not allowed to discuss anything with the commissioner, even though she's my commissioner, so I have to lean on you, sir, as the chair.
Well, I can't speak for her, nor will I try, so that's the best I can tell you for now.
So where do we go from here? How do we move forward? Is this gonna be back on the agenda at the next board meeting after this alleged investigation is done? Where are we?
We can talk further later, but, uh, right now your time's up, sir. Thank you.
Chairman.
Yes.
I will state this. This, what was on this agenda tonight was just a vendor selection. It was not a programmatic. To me, there are so many unanswered questions in this from a trash pickup perspective of even, does it have the feasibility to work? So therefore.
And whose opinion?
Let me finish. I'm not gonna have a conversation with you. So for me, I want a lot of other questions answered here before we move forward with a programmatic stance to begin to benefit this county.
So along with your questions and the citizens have questions, do, are we gonna have a forum or a public hearing? How does this move forward?
Mr. Chairman, my seat.
Each, each, each commissioner will proceed as they see fit. If it comes for this board for a vote, then we will have a vote on said subjects. Commissioner Anderson.
I'm gonna say, I totally agree with you. We need to move forward with this. It is a travesty that we're sitting around here with trash being thrown in the middle of the street. Our county is nasty, and it's time that we, that we move forward. So I'm going to continue to agree with you on that, and we just have to have a board that is willing to move forward and do the right thing. It's not about questions being answered. It's about doing what the people have asked us to do. And if we're not doing that, you're right, some of us don't even need to be sitting up here right now. Thank you.
But I'd like to reiterate this, and then I'm gonna sit down. In, in the embryonic phase of, of, of an approved agenda item, we always can add amendments or, or amend the, the situation. But at some point, we just can't keep killing everything that we bring before you guys, and then we gotta go through this hem and a horn. We need to approve this. If there need to be amendments made later, then I think that's acceptable. That's just my statement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. My remarks revolve around Dr. Martin Luther King and the last Commissioners' meeting and the vote on public comment and length of public comment. Dr. King, in his short life, helped make life better for all of us, and certainly, certainly helped give all of us a voice. With that being said, I want to salute those who tried to restore our voice at the last B O C meeting. To those who have limited our voice, I am not only surprised but appalled. All mothers that bear new life want their children to have a voice. And you, as mothers and commissioners, have demonstrated infant side to your children constituents. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. And Mr. Reed, is there a reason or a need for executive session?
Always. Um, litigation.
Did watch the news. It's kind of cold outside. I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Litigation, uh, real estate, personnel.
That's the whole trifecta. All right, is there a motion to go into executive session, real estate, personnel, and litigation? Some move. I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Y'all have a good evening. All right, motion to reconvene. I'll second. Those in favor, aye. Oppose, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first is a settlement in the matter of, uh, Ramona Frost Laws dismissing, uh, any claims against, uh, the county, uh, Daniel Adam Day, Board of Commissioners, Police Department. And this is in reference to a traffic accident that occurred on January fourth, twenty twenty-two, uh, at or near, uh, McDonough Road, East. at or near McDonough Road, East Lovejoy Road, and this is in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I also ask for the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required by the agreement.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
Yes, will you give us the last name of that?
Laws, L-A-W-S.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
The next is a request to authorize me to retain the firm of Nelson Mullins and specifically Nita Wallace Thomas to represent the county in potential litigation against Roman United.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, and that's at the rate of three hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, and two eighty-four associates and one thirty-five for paralegals.
Is that it?
That's it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
How many associates?
I don't know how many associates, but it would just be whoever she has working with her on a particular, on this particular matter. And, right, it's just setting that rate, so it could be people who are rotating in and out, but it won't be, it won't be an army, if that.
Thank you. That helps.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Stanford.
Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, on behalf of Parks and Recreation, we're requesting the Board of Commissioners to approve a one-time payment to four seasonal lifeguards. This payment is for the completion of an incentive program offered to all lifeguards due to lifeguard shortages that were taking place in twenty-twenty-three in a total amount of five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. The four employees, Shaffer Hurd at eight thou, one thousand eight hundred and eighty bucks, Ethan Morgan, one thousand eight hundred and eighty bucks, Inde Shae Thomas, one thousand ninety, and Shanae Wiggins at five hundred dollars. We put that in the form of a request to the board.
I'll put it in the form of a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Anything else, Mr. Reed? Well, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, and have a good evening.